So we'll try that one more time to make sure that it is on. I already forgot to use the microphone. On, on tape. And I have a motion to open the meeting. Chris Raffetto, seconded by Jane Anderson. All those in favor? One, two, three, four, five, um, uh, nothing.
The administration has been started. That is on you.
All right. So can, um, please join me in a pledge to the flag. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. So, um, thank you all for joining us for our August 12th work session. Um, as you can see, we have four board members here on the stage and we have one who is calling in remotely, um, uh, through audio for the meeting and one who is absent. Um, so two who are absent, sorry. Um, so just to clarify, this is a little bit different from our normal, uh, regular board meetings. Uh, work session is really an opportunity for the board to talk through, um, an item or a program or an issue in depth that we don't always get to do. It's, there's no agenda where we are approving anything like we do in our regular board meetings, which are usually either personnel or fiscal related. So, um, tonight may just be a lot of discussion and possibly some follow-up items as a result of the evening. Um, so I think I would turn it over to Dr. Byrne.
Thank you very much. Good evening. So, uh, the way we're, we're going to proceed, I know the board wanted to talk through the recommendations of the Race Inclusivity and Community Task Force that were presented at the June 15th Board of Education meeting. So what I have prepared is a, a short presentation that essentially is not a presentation, but it's for your ability to view the recommendations themselves that were presented. So you will see the same exact slides, um, up on the screen and in front of you on paper that were presented to you and the community on June 15th. They haven't been changed in any way. And then there's a final slide that just gives you a status update on the equity audit and the, uh, data piece that, that we've been working on. So I will control, uh, the slides from my clicker here and certainly, um, turn it over to the board for your discussion and we'll actually be recording notes of any actions or direction or steps that you wish us to pursue as you discuss, discuss the different items. So, um, and are certainly available for any questions.
Okay. So I think, um, first recommendation, um, and, uh, you know, hopefully everyone who's, who does end up watching this video will, um, understand we're working a little bit with microphones and trying to make sure that we, um, are, um, speaking up so everyone can hear what we're saying for throughout the discussion, but it might be a little awkward throughout. Um, so the first recommendation is for athletics and extracurricular activities. Um, so we can certainly read through each of them and then just discuss as we go. Um, so the first is to evaluate our present extracurricular and athletic programs in relation to participation in offerings, specifically addressing who is participating with specific attention to a breakdown of various groupings such as gender, race, socioeconomic, special needs, LGBTQ, et cetera. So I guess just kicking off this, um, I think, you know, one of the things that, that, um, when we had these recommendations passed on to us was trying to get a better handle of what the landscape actually looks like for, in, for RINE. Um, and so, um, you know, I'll, I'll open it up to anyone who'd love to, to make a comment, but, um, it seems like, uh, this seems like a very straightforward opportunity to get a better sense of who's taking advantage of the extracurriculars and athletic programs. Um, are students represented across the board as we hope, um, you know?
I think it's good gathering data. Gathering data is always a good thing. Understanding where we stand is always a wonderful thing. Um, I'm highly supportive of doing that. I, you know, I think that it opens up lots of questions down the road. What do we do with the information once again? What are the expectations? Um, and what would you expect to have representation look like from different groups? I think it's great to have the data and it'll open up lots of interesting discussions.
Well, I think until we have the data, we don't know, we don't really know what the next question is to ask.
Right, yeah. And also, I also want to, I'm sorry, one more time. Do we know that we have the ability to categorize and discriminate across all of these categories? Do we have that data to, we know?
We do have much of the demographic data, certainly around ethnicity, um, ability, disability. We can pull that from our system. Um, for LGBTQ plus, we would have, students would have to identify.
We don't have that now across the board.
Yeah. That's.
And we're going to say on the high question, we don't have that across the board.
That would be self-identification. Um, so that would be, if we want to gather this data, we, you know, we could certainly work with, um, the high school administration, middle school administration and the athletic director to put together a, a plan to collect this information and pull it together and bring back to the board.
Has this been done in other places? Have you seen this? I've.
I've seen other places do some evaluations of their extracurricular programming. Uh, not to this extent, uh, but I could cer- I, I don't know if it being done to this extent, but we could certainly find out more from other places and what they've done.
Because I, I think, you know, just pointing them there might be, might be a challenge and that would push back and I would have to be quite careful in doing that. But I'm not, but I generally am absolutely prepared to gather, so I think it's possible.
Well, and it might be that we just start with what we can identify.
Sure.
Um, on, on the surface without there being a self-identification necessary from the student at first and see what that looks like. Um, because I think part of the, part of the reason there was a recommendation based on the presentation we had back in June was that there could be some holes. So we have to, we have to get the foundation first before we can even identify if there's holes that, or barriers that, that maybe some students experience within these, within extracurriculars and athletics.
And the only thing I would add, um, that's not specifically, I guess it's not highlighted here, but something I think we're going to touch on with each of these is really relying on the student voice as well. So it's not necessarily having to self-identify, but even having the athletics director, you know, kind of talking to them about, I mean, certain things like socioeconomic, that's going to be very, we're not going to want to pigeonhole people into those categories and run an analysis, you know, have them self-select, but even those conversations involving the students in this process, um, I think is just going to, is going to help a lot and, you know, getting, making sure that their feedback on, on each of these things is extracurricular too. It goes beyond, you know, obviously just the athletics. There's, there's so many programs within the school. Um, and I'm making sure we're just using the students as a resource to make sure we're not missing, you know, a, a data collection point.
But I, I think, I think that, I think, yes, absolutely. But I think we, before we even get down that road, it is the very basic of what data do we currently have? And then being able to say, okay, administration, what do we, what can we identify? That we can identify A, B, C, but we, okay, that's great. But now if we go back to a recommendation, we're missing C, D, E. Well, is there a way for the district to be able to get that data? Yes, we can. We have another, are there other systems or do we need to do some sort of collaboration, conversation, communication with students through their various activities? Is this something? So I think there's a whole, I, I think the baseline is let's take what the data systems that we have that can provide us with information that's easily accessible for us then to be able to say, now what else do we need? And then we can try to figure out where to go from there. Tom, you want to?
Yeah, well, you stole a lot of us besides Richard.
You're welcome.
Largely, I'm in agreement with what Chris and Jane said, which is not to begin, I'm not in agreement with anybody else, but let's, let's get started. I won't be had. I think that one of the things is to add some of these things you may want to look at. There's ways to de-modeling to get some sense of sort of what there is. Like the socioeconomic, we may never get to get that perfect. We may be able to get some proxy, um, from, you know, sort of other data sources to analyze these things and make some reasonable differences. This is the down the line type of thing, the first step as, you know, particularly. Let's see what we have and then get easily, and I have that work.
For, for districts though, this, um, social, socioeconomic status, SES is something that is actually, um, run through federal programs. So something like people who have access or take access to our free and produce lunch programs, that's where we would get that data from. So it would not be, um, a data set that somebody would have to self-report. It comes through the services that people access in our school systems already. So that's a data set we have.
But it's pretty binary, Jake said.
No, for sure. Yeah. Yeah. Do you want to do it? Can you access it or not?
Oh, I got it.
All right. So, so I think based on what, um, you said, Dr. Byrne, as a, I think what we request at least from this particular bullet is, um, and it sounds like one of the pieces that we could, um, naturally identify based on just student data pieces are obviously gender, race, um, special needs and maybe a, a look at the socioeconomic status based on that one criteria for now.
That's what we've got.
Yeah. And then we can see what that looks like. And so we have at least have that baseline understanding of who's, who currently is accessing our extracurriculars and our athletics. Like what is that, what does that look like generally across our system?
And, and we'll define what the offerings are so that there's an understanding of, of the scope of the offerings of the different programs.
That, yeah, that would obviously be, because we'd have to see, you know, where are we seeing? Um, it's not just extracurriculars as a bucket. I would think we would want to look at, okay, extracurricular one, extracurricular two, right? That, in that level of detail. Okay. Um, bullet number two is review of current Board of Education policies specific to eligibility requirements. Ensure that policies are inclusive, that students who struggle with eligibility are supported through policy change if necessary. Um, oh, sorry.
So, so I could give a little background. So there, there is an official Board of Education policy for eligibility for participation in extracurricular activities. So what, um, was explained by the subgroup is that the board policy committee take a look at that policy, um, uh, and to understand whether or not if, if there are some safeguards or supports or pieces that could be considered for including in the policy that could assist a student that may be struggling to meet eligibility to different programs. So if a student is struggling academically, is there a way that with the right supports they could potentially, um, be able, eligible to participate in a particular activity?
Comments from, questions?
Yes. As a matter of fact. Okay. Uh, so this is a policy that the policy committee within the last six months, and actually when I look at the policy adoption date, had been reviewed. And we did that with Erin in May. It got approved. So it is a policy that we have looked at because we wanted to ensure that, and from the basic understanding of the way the policy is currently written and structured, that our special education students at that particular time who were looking with that sort of an eye to ensure that they had an opportunity to access their programs. I think, um, certainly taking another look at the policy, I think it's worthwhile. I would say, I would like us to get a bit more data about the participation, right? I see this really fitting best kind of duck tailing, is the word, um, with the initial data set that we requested because for us to be able to say, are there other barriers within this policy? Maybe less productive until we can see, are there, are there groups that are not participating? And is it a result of something policy review?
So what I'm hearing is you'd like us to gather data to take a look back potentially and say across the last couple of years, try and understand, uh, try and develop a better understanding based on data of students that are not, that are on the ineligible list and not able to participate because there are actual ineligible lists that come out, um, that, uh, the, the different extracurriculars and athletics work on.
Yeah. We got to figure out if it's, if it's, if the policy is blocking and then why. Try to indicate to the causes, perhaps not just the effects. But I, I see this as an opportunity to really dig into. If there are student populations that are running in the eligibility, let's figure out why they are. Right? Perhaps it's not changed the policy, but it's giving them more support to reach those things. And if that, if you can identify that, you can forward that way. I think that's a tremendous source of, you know, of useful information that they're trying to.
To that point then, I think, um, what we might want to do is, is.
Can you speak up a little?
Sure. Um, I think what we might want to do for the first bullet then is not just look at this one snapshot of one year, but like you're saying, see if there's like, and maybe it's a two or three year. I don't know what the, the most appropriate time span would be, um, to look at. But it's, you know, maybe looking a little bit further back than just one year. Um, especially given the last, how the last couple of years have been, it might be worthwhile having some of that past, more standard year data. All right. Great.
Do you know anything else I'll say on this, this second bullet? I'm, I'm in agreement with everybody you said. Um, I've heard anecdotally, this is one of the things that came sort of, you know, we will probably talk a lot tonight about the voice of the student. This is one I think that it came from students pushing and, and feeling on this. Again, I don't know that and I've heard that anecdotally. Um, and, uh, it's just something considered that, that's not a pushing that we should really rethink these policies or not. Um, I think I agree with everything that everyone said, but I just wanted to, you know, float that out that I've sort of heard in that, uh, building of this world.
Well, and, and in that case, I think what's even more important is to have the, the actual data pieces to look at in order to understand if there is something that links back to the anecdotal that you've been hearing or that has maybe been floating around. Okay. Um, and then the last bullet for athletics and extracurriculars is to consider a community service element within the, um, extracurricular, with each, within each extracurricular group as well as the athletic program. Um, and I think, um, it might, I've thought about this one a lot. I, I think it, while I, I think there's enormous value in community service, I think there's already established community service that happens. So I wouldn't want to, I think, I think that there might be some wait time on this particular element to see where, where there might be other ways to integrate into our already existing community service.
Kind of this would absolutely jumped off the page when we first saw it. And I, and I, and I would like, you know, try to back my head through it. I think it's because probably the people who are on this subgroup were focused on community service, perhaps not just the people that, like, we, we have community services at core for everyone's students and we value it very, very highly. Um, I'm really curious to what they were trying to dive into. It almost seems like if they were diving into quality, like the internal RINE versus global view. It, it felt like they were really wanting to have a discussion about the kind of community service that we either require or encourage. Um, and I think that's a very different discussion for everyone. I don't think it belongs within extracurriculars and athletics. But I think you jump right over it. If we want to talk about athletics, it's a totally.
Well, right. And I, and I suppose if that's, if, if we get to a point where, um, we are looking at community service across the board, perhaps there's an element that there was a feeling that, um, individuals who are part of a club or part of an athletic team might want to, you know, do something specific as a group around community service. I, I don't, I just feel like there's not, and I don't, I didn't think if we're going to really try and take our first steps, this is not one that I would take a step with right now. Any, any other comments on that?
Uh, no, I think the only thing I'd say is going back to Tom's earlier point that if this, if these categories of these bullets that came out of athletics and athletics were more student-driven, then I would encourage students who perhaps are not feeling fulfilled in their community service experiences or opportunities to reach out to the administration at the middle school, high school, at the athletic department to go through those channels to talk about the expansion of their own opportunities within community service. I don't think as a district at this point, we, it's something we need to do, but certainly for individuals who are not feeling fulfilled, they should make that personal responsibility to engage in those conversations with the administration.
Right. But to Chris's point, I think it's a bigger conversation than just athletics and extracurriculars.
That's why I'm saying, reach out to building level administrators.
Definitely. I would agree. Okay.
So I just switched the slide up to student support, um, the recommendations from the student support.
Is this process working for everyone to, to go bullet by bullet? How are we feeling as a, as a board about?
I can't have that in another one.
Okay. All right.
Yeah. It's working great. The only thing I ask Eric and, um, Jack, just, you know, like, Jack, I can sort of see your head moving when you look at Eric. I can understand you look towards the, I have to change. I don't know how to be intentional with it, but, um, I'm also getting a little high looking brain. Otherwise, I'm afraid this process, appreciation, patience.
No worries.
You know, I, I just don't get it.
Okay. Um, so does it help if I talk in this direction?
That's Chris's say.
Excellent. Okay. All right. So student support recommendations. Um, the first one is to evaluate, improve or establish clear channels for students seeking support and actively communicate those channels to students through mediums such as the district website, school assemblies, classroom presentations and signage throughout the buildings. Students should be able to easily identify and access the person or people in their building and provide and/or connect them to the appropriate support. So again, I feel like this starts with evaluate because we can't approve what we don't know.
Yeah.
Exists.
I bet you say yes, it's, it's great.
Well, I think it's.
I think those students should have great ways to reach out and support. I'm all for it.
Well, and I think they are, the district has done them, right? There are opportunities, but clearly they are missing certain groups of people. So I think to evaluate, to see, okay, how is it being done now? Are there gaps? Are there places where things could be improved upon? And I think again, new building level administrators at both the middle school and the high school, this is a good opportunity for them to reflect on past practices to see if they have any recommendations.
Or perhaps just more clearly communicate the support that already exists and the challenge again.
Oh, yeah. That's what I'm telling you.
Yeah. All of you.
I think that, I mean, I think that this sort of applies to the, off, based on the first three bullets. Um, you know, some of this is, as we think about this, as we evaluate, you know, how do we destigmatize some of this stuff? I mean, I just remember going back and reading through the Instagram page that, I don't want to say it sells off, but it's something we did, um, you know, and, and also to some of the responses that we saw in the panorama survey, triple, three, four responses. I mean, and, and, and to some of the comments that, you know, a lot of this stuff is, it's difficult for people to reach out and it's difficult to, to say, I need help or I feel marginalized or I feel left out or, or, or whatever. Right? So that, that's something in addition to making the resources clear, how do we also, you know, think about making them accessible? I remember one comment somewhere, I don't remember where this was, but I think it was in a discussion or presentation in the past course where somebody said, yeah, we know there's these resources, but it's also like obvious we don't get them and no one's going to do it because you're flagging yourself as someone who might have to ask for help or something along those lines. So just the types of things we need to think about as more as we, you know, appoint a sub-task, like a task force in some group to evaluate these things, that's probably just as important as having the resources available to making sure there's been a way that is well committed. People are encouraged to take advantage of that.
Well, so I, yes, I think that's an important piece of it. And I think that's, in my mind, that's part of the evaluation process. Um, so it's not just evaluate, is there signage? It's evaluate if there's a way, and I, I don't know if there is a way off the top of my head. This is something that I think the administrators for the middle school, high school and others who are, are in those fields can help us decipher a way to almost like see, well, what, maybe, maybe, what is the path of a student that is in crisis or is in need of support? What happens when they reach out? Like, do we have a sense of that experience for the student? Um, so I can see it as a, as a, a level, that kind of evaluation level, not just are there signs? You know, doing things that are more student-centric and accessible now like QR codes and those types of things. We've talked about, heard about those being implemented. But also, you know, what does that feel like for that student? And, and how do you let those, how do you let all students know what to expect if that is what you want to do or need?
And I certainly think as we, you know, I've heard student voice a few times tonight. This is certainly a place where we can involve students to help as part of the evaluation because we need to know from the end user of these supports, how are they finding out about them? How, how would it be best for them to find out about them? And what would be the best way to reach the kids, um, in, in more ways than just signs and QR codes throughout the, the building? So.
I think you've just referred to board number two. Which is more, more, I mean, gotten there a little bit.
Right. And so I think it's, to, to that point, I'm not sure I understood what, what a student support task force would be. Um, and I think, you know, as Tom mentioned, if there's going to be sort of like a, an identification maybe in this particular instance of a student subgroup that could help to.
I, I do want to say, um, separate from this work, I have received a proposal from the, the new high school administrations two weeks ago to set up a student ambassador program. So that they almost like a peer, a peer leader type program at the high school that, that would work with like similar, it's kind of modeled after the principal's council at the middle school where, where there are numbers of kids that volunteer and are really a part of the life of the school in a different way. They participate in events, they assist in back to school night and things like that. And they also help, um, Mr. Campbell in fact sent the proposal up to me with Ms. Short, um, which I fully supported and thought it was a terrific idea. So, so I think there's certainly, um, they were thinking not in relationship to this work, but I think this is a great opportunity to say to them, listen, this is a great idea. This is also a recommendation from the task force that, that maybe we're really pursuing. So, uh, I have asked them to please make the plans to get that up and running because they want to involve students in orientation and, uh, the start of the school year when we're all back full-time in person, five days a week, um, in September on the ninth, so that we can make that transition easier for kids and have that as an additional resource, a kid-to-kid resource available.
So I, I think the only thing I would ask in that, um, same spirit is that there be some, some real, um, deep thought put into how do you get to the kid who isn't going to naturally self-select into that kind of a program? Um, and I think, I feel like that's, uh, I'm, in my mind, I'm thinking like, you know, sort of the ones that are a little bit under the radar. They're not in, in the, you know, the, the people that want to first try something new. So, you know, again, I think it's, this is, I think just a first step in exploring, um, and understanding a little bit. um, and understanding a little bit more about how we have this support system for students and, and, you know, where, and then really deep dive into what could those improvements be? So that they're meaningful, and the, the whole point would be that they should be meaningful.
I, I think with all of this, right, it goes back to that first bullet is, let's evaluate what, what do we currently have in place? And who's accessing it? Is it being accessed, right? Like, so we have signage, okay, how many kids, what's a percentage of kids who are actually following the prescribed channels? And then we can really say, is the way it's set up now working, are kids engaging with it? But until we know kind of what our, what our use rate is, we can't say what's working, you know, or what we need to do next. We need to first just have some data to, to be able to look at, what do we need more information on? Or do we have enough that says this actually isn't working? And so then, how do we engage with peer, not, that would be student ambassadors? And kids who are not raising their hands to participate, but who are actually, actually using it, right? And, and how do we make sure we get their input? And how do we get input from all of the kids in those kinds of things? But we need that initial data set first.
And, and I think just to be really clear for, um, when we talk about students, I mean, while this might have been called up a race and inclusivity community task force, this is, it's well beyond an identification around race. This is, this is about all, each student within our community who, you know, regardless of, of any one category, is not feeling like they are part of the community or aren't sure how to get the supports that they need. Um, so I just, I, I think it's important to keep reiterating that, that this is, this is about each and every student. Um, it's not about any one particular group of students that, um, you know, is meant to reach out to.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so I think we kind of covered then bullet number two already. Um, and while bullet number two, I think as it's written, it, it, we're not really sure what that could be, but, you know, we see where there could be some, um, uh, role for a student support entity. Um, so the third is to identify mechanisms to support parents and caregivers of students who feel marginalized in our school community, such as working with existing parent organizations within the district to provide a platform that enables parents to safely and effectively advocate for their children. So for this particular bullet, um, you know, I feel like there's, if, if we're going to work with parents, there's, um, sort of a natural, potentially a natural connection to our parent organizations in some capacity. Um, so perhaps that's where to start exploring.
Well, I do, I, I meet with the leadership from the parent organizations from each of the schools in Raze monthly. Um, so this certainly could be something that I bring in our first meeting of the year in September. But, um, we have wonderful parent volunteers from across all of our schools and we do meet and talk about our work together. And I, I certainly believe from my work with the, the parent organization leadership in the past that they would be very interested and supportive of, of our families and trying to, um, reach more families and, and help them identify ways to support.
Is, is there a history on Raze and how, like, was that a parent-driven group that specifically banded together to help on the special ed side? Um, and just thinking about how, you know, so we have documented to the board, um, you know, sort of some BIPOC students who have said that they, through an open letter to the board, felt that we could make some, you know, changes on inclusivity, so kind of reaching out to that, finding a way to reach out to that parent group specifically, giving them the model of Raze and how that, a group of parents who have similar concerns for students, that they could create a path for them, in a way. And by the way, are there other groups of parents similar to Raze that have, just, issues to help elevate their students within our community? Um, and sort of using Raze as a, a really good example of a way parents can band together to, you know, improve the outcomes for their, their students if they have similar inclusivity or, you know, any sort of issue that they're trying to elevate.
Yeah. I, I would, I, I, I think that's a, it's a, um, it's an interesting, uh, idea to explore and see where, what that might look like in terms of, um, you know, how many people would be interested in that? I'd be really curious to hear even just in general, what the current PO leadership, uh, what their sense is of, of, um, the types of issues that parents bring to them from an advocating standpoint, to understand that better, because I think there are some of those, but, you know, often that happens uh, solely at the, at the building level, which is appropriate, um, when there's an issue at, at the building level. And, and, you know, so I think, I think if, I'd love to kind of hear more about what some of those issues might be and certainly then understand better, maybe there's a, maybe there's just a, a, a better way to, um, engage with parents about how to advocate for their child. Because I think to your point, I think Raze has that function already built in, whereas I don't know that the other PO models are, are built specifically around including that advocacy piece.
Yeah, I can, I can, from my heavy involvement at the Milton Pio, uh, there is definitely a different, uh, historically, there's a different structure around the POs versus the Raze function. And it is much more a, um, community-building, uh, fundraising structure as opposed to a historical, um, um, needs or, or curriculum. There, there's always, there, there are always meetings where they're bringing in curriculum and instruction and those kinds of questions. The advocacy is certainly not something that historically has been part of the PO structure. Um, but I do think it would be a worthwhile conversation, looking at just the general structures anyway of the POs. And are they working to meet the needs of the communities from the broad sector, right, within the building? And I think that would be a great conversation with the building principals and the POs. And then really to look and talk about, and I know Dr. Byrne, you've talked about this for a few years now, and, uh, uh, just an overall look at, are we utilizing and are we leveraging our parents in, in, in a way that really doesn't advocate for, for all kids? In this, in the, with as much might as we have? And so I think that would be a worthwhile conversation and engagement, especially as we move towards this idea that we have five schools in one system as opposed to five independent schools who all exist within a system. And we are definitely moving towards one system. And I think having a PO structure that better reflects that would also possibly really leverage some real support for our parents in a different way.
So I think if, um, I think the follow-up there then is, um, Dr. Byrne, if you can have a, that kind of conversation, a preliminary conversation with the POs to, to start off understanding where, um, where, where we might be able to go with this, uh, um, kind of advocating for your student, um, for the parent, uh, to support parents in that. And I, and I think too, I, you know, as we, as we go through these, just for the, for the community, one of the important things to state is that at this, at least so far, at this juncture, we are not, um, this is all about just some internal evaluation of information, data, and, um, you know, what, what else we can discover about our school community. Um, so, you know, I think, I think it's just important for people to know that we want to make sure that we're taking a measured approach to this so that we are, um, fully in full understanding of where we're trying to address the needs of RYE. Okay, so the last bullet here for student support is, teachers, coaches, and school staff members are our frontline resources in terms of creating and sustaining a culture of belonging and inclusion. To ensure our faculty and staff have the tools they need to perform this role effectively, we must fund broad-based training for our teachers and staff to better understand, um, the New York State Education Cultural Responsive Sustaining, I'm going to, I'm not going to do the right word, Education Framework. It's an acronym. The Trauma-Informed and Empowered to Integrate Social-Emotional Learning Into Curriculum Delivery. Um, so I totally agree that teachers, coaches, and school staff are our frontline resources. That, that I absolutely agree with.
Don't forget our students.
And our students, sorry.
I think they should be in there as well.
Oh. Well, they're the frontline resource for the students.
I think our students can be frontline student resources for other students. That's where we're trying to get. That's the goal, I think, and maybe I'm being a little too meta on that, but, but I think that's the idea. I think other members of the community feel like part of the community, so.
Right.
I don't ever want to separate this, separate students acting.
I get your point. Um, I, I mean, I think for this in particular, I think we, I think what's important is to first understand what kind of training currently happens? And is it effective? And is it serving what we're hoping it's serving when people are being trained?
Well, I think, and I, and that's a great point, that's a great point, and I think what you're figuring out, what you, and I'm going to make this point now because the NICE framework is going to come up a lot. Um, and it is, having spent a fair amount of time going through it, when I first came up, and then over the summer again, it's a framework. It's a, it's a list of lofty ideals. It is intended for the entire state. It is really up to every district to figure out how to take those ideals and make them real within and for our students. Um, so, and I'm not picking on what they, they call this out about, it's a bigger, it's a, it's a much broader, thought I'm having around the framework is that training people in the framework won't take any progress. I mean, yes, those ideals are great, we've talked about them before. It's a, I think everyone should read through it, everyone should become familiar with it. Um, but it's getting to solution, getting to, you know, I think they're, this, the comment I love in here is about, how do you integrate social-emotional learning into curriculum delivery? That's a great idea. Learning how to do that, thinking about that on a broad scale is a, is a huge goal of ours. We're not going to find that in the framework.
No. There's no step-by, well, there's no step-by, so the framework itself, I think, I think your point though is, it's not like there's this framework to say step-by-step, here's what you do, you know, when you introduce your curriculum idea and here's how you.
Much more grandeur working than you're doing.
Yes, but, but to, to, to your comment that social-emotional learning is not in the framework, one of the very pillars is creating a more.
No, 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 it's not what I said.
And, and affirming environment.
How to integrate it further, is the how to.
Right, right, there is, right, it doesn't tell you how to walk. Right, it doesn't tell you how to walk in, in two years' less.
Right, right, I think you did a lot of that.
But it absolutely is a key piece of that. But I think we are, as we were from the first slide, we're six steps from where we need to be.
Yes.
Because before, I think we can have any training for anyone, there needs to be a very thorough understanding of what really this framework is. And that needs to happen for a whole lot of constituents. But before we can get to any sort of evaluation of professional development or any sort of innovation about how to take pieces of the, we've got to first understand what it is.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm just going to, because I, as we know, there's been a lot of discussion around this framework from many members of the community. Um, and so I think there's, there's a question that sits out there with some community members of, this isn't even worth looking at. Why are we even bothering to look at this? So I, I think it's an important question to hear.
Yeah.
And, um, and I think the, the other piece of that is part of what you were talking about, Jane, which is, we need to, we need to understand more fully what this framework is, um, providing, can provide, what it is meant for, and then have a, a much clearer understanding of how would that, how would that impact what happens in a classroom?
And why would it need to happen in a classroom, right? So it's taking that idea of what is it? How could it become part of, um, what would be the benefit for it to be in the RYE schools? Right, the elements of it? And then what would it actually look like, right? And what is the reasoning? And we, I think, you know, one of the things that, that research is very clear on is that students who have a strong sense of belonging in school perform at their highest capable possible levels. And academic excellence is a stated mission of this district. And so for us to at hand dismiss a framework that could, um, provide all students an opportunity to propel their learning and their success even further would not be to our students' benefits, it wouldn't be to our community's benefit. So I think there is a lot of, um, reflection and learning that we as a board and as a district should undertake about the very foundational understanding of what's in this framework. So that we can have the conversations about how does, where is it possible? Where is it beneficial to layer that into the work that we already do?
Yeah, and just to piggyback on, on all of this, you know, we'll see how much we repeat the same thing throughout the evening or we do, we should use this conversation now if I reference back to it, when I talk to the framework. I, I, I probably agree with everything that, that's been said so far. You know, the framework in and of itself though, there, there's a lot to it and then there's also not a lot to it at the same time, you know, so there's very, as much as it's a massive document that, you know, will take a, a pretty long while to make, I think probably all of us have it at this point a couple of times, but, um, it also is very repetitive though. And, and that's not necessarily a bad thing in, in, in any mission before. So I think if you've taken some time to study, it's not that hard to get the general sense of it, but then the specifics, it's, it's interesting because there are things in there that, you know, we've had some of these conversations before, I think are very good and very, very relevant to us. There's stuff in there that, you know, I'll be, I disagree with. Um, and then there's stuff in there that honestly, I have no idea what it means and I'm ready for a time to just learn what it means. Um, and so, but the point is that if this framework is tool, it's a resource for it. It's not the only resource for us, we have other resources. It's an important resource that should be looked at, I think anything in it should be discussed. But I also don't think that anything in it you need to look at as something that RYE needs to do and we should, and I know Chris made this analogy, I think, um, at the meeting when his presentation would come up. We need to take it and other resources out of it and look to what is going to work for us and how do we want to articulate it, how do, what do we want to do specifically, concrete? What do you want to implement? And this is one of the resources and tools we can draw from, but, you know, I would say one of not all.
So, so, um, I think, I've just lost my train of thought. What, sorry, I, 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 I think what's, um, one of the takeaways from this, as we talked about, was how do, how do we translate these questions about the framework to, um, uh, something where it can be, uh, um, discussed, communicated with our community? Um, and, or with us and faculty and, so that there is a better understanding of what the, what this framework is, um, what it, what it's outlining. And, and then I think the other piece to, to, I think everyone's sort of made this point a little bit. You know, we have a, a document that we've been using to continue to model our entire school district off of, and it's the RYE commitment. And some of, much of the, the spirit of the RYE commitment is in this framework. So, you know, when we talk about high expectations and rigorous instruction and inclusive curriculum and, I mean, there, these are all pieces that, that we have already stated. and, I mean, they're, these are all pieces that we have already stated for now four or five years that we want to be able to bestow and provide to our students. So, part of this, better understanding of how this framework can be helpful to us is also seeing where it complements and maybe boosts the RYE commitment to further that goal.
So what I'm hearing is a focus on developing understanding of what the framework is across the broad community of RYE. So, staff in the schools, parents, community members, for us to come up with a way to help this community develop a greater understanding of, or an understanding of, what is the framework? What does it mean? What does it mean for our schools? And how does it align with the RYE commitment? So, to me, I could see quite a number of things coming out of this. Sessions to unpack and develop understanding with our staff, sessions to unpack and develop understanding with parents, with the broader community, and opportunities for people to read it, discuss it, talk it through, line it up against the RYE commitment. And I certainly believe that that's something we can put in place, and we could create opportunities for that to happen.
I think that's a great first step toward, before we can do anything else, we have to do that.
Well, and I just, I just want to, like, put as clear a point on it as we can, that this framework is not a curriculum. These are not lessons. There is nothing in the framework that is a lesson, there is nothing that is taught in classes that comes out of this framework. And I think we just want to be very clear so that people understand that when we're talking about looking at the framework, we're looking at guiding principles, big picture ideas, not content-driven lessons.
Yeah, I think the thing to add on that, you know, Dr. Jane and Eric just said, all of this will be a conversation with the community. This will be in terms of, you know, it's not just for the eight of us to sort out. And so it will be an engaging dialogue, as we've said by several before, by making sure that, you know, understanding what it is, bringing that energy to the community, and then what we take from it, and how we choose what to draw on, and what to implement, a community conversation with parents, students. Well, that's the same thing with the, you know, we don't necessarily have people in the school, but there's still members of the city of RYE that are relevant to. And I think that's one of the things that we have to focus on and make sure that we build into our process, whether that's communications out, whether that's the learning sessions. And I think all along those lines is the same, if it's a process and a dialogue, I think we all seem to get to the same endgame.
I totally agree. So I think, I think actually this last bullet on the student support really lends itself more to professional learning as well, which I think is the next section. Do anyone else have anything else on student support they wanted to talk about before we move on to professional learning? No? Okay. So I'm not going to read through all phases of the professional learning because I really think that we are in the gathering of learning at this point. And in some ways, I feel like we already know what we need to do first, a bit, is with this understanding of the framework. I, I'll just ask the question, in terms of professional learning, I feel like we currently do try to align it with the RYE commitment, but perhaps it hasn't touched every professional learning program, or do you feel like that's already been?
I would say...
We're still on student support.
Oh, sorry. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. I would say that we work very hard to ensure that all of our professional learning offerings are aligned with the RYE commitment. Certainly, we look at the RYE commitment in what we are saying, what we are committing to our students. If you look across, if you did a crosswalk with the things we're committing to the students with the offerings for our professional learning, you will see those run a constant through the programs that we offer for students. But I will say, I kind of think the charge from the last bullet point on the previous slide, I feel like we have to start there before we do anything else. I mean, we just said that it's the entire community, it's the faculty, it's the staff, it's the parents, it's students, it's the broader RYE community. Before we do anything, we have to all have an understanding of what this framework is and how it aligns and what it means.
This is kind of a implementation plan. This will come out of that. But I think everything on this slide is, you know, well thought out, and I think that they organized it very well. I think you encapsulated it when you talked about the takeaways from the last slide, the things to do across the district and aligning, and then thinking about aligning the framework is, aligning the RYE commitment. I think that all of those three, it just looks like a matching plan to do that. So, but I don't want to take a short trip, but I kind of feel like it lines up that very straightforward.
Yeah, it's like there's a phase A column. Right? We need to add a column to that.
Yeah, yeah, right.
And to say, okay, let's learn about it, because before, we can't do the next pieces until we really have an understanding of it.
Right. I guess the only other thing to add is, at the public comment session for this, when these recommendations came out, there was a request from one of the parents from REES to include the Blueprint for Improved Results document as well. So we're pulling that in to this analysis, you know, as an ongoing piece as well. Or if there's another document that Dr. Greenberg or somebody recommends to say, you know, it would be helpful, that the blueprint for students with disabilities from the Office of Special Education would also be called out. I just wanted to pull that.
That's a great point.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up, Kelsey, because it's something that I had in my notes also, and I think it's, we were able to locate at least the cover memo around it. It's called the Blueprint for Improved Results for Students with Disabilities. And so, and in reading through kind of the overview of it, it does align very nicely with, you know, envision with what you want to be doing, I think with both the RYE commitment and with what seems like the purpose of the framework is. So, I'd like to bring that up, because it is something that we noted to make sure we brought, we included. Okay, so I think the very last bullet in this Phase 1, which is really the only column I think we can talk about for right now in this part of the discussion, is identify opportunities for students and teachers to collaborate during professional learning. So I don't know, I'll turn to the administration, I don't know how.
I've certainly experienced some professional learning opportunities where students were involved, and I think that can be very helpful. I think, when I certainly think about the RYE commitment and what we're committing to the students, I think we could work with students to understand better what those things are. But I certainly believe that there are ways that we can bring students in to help us develop better understanding and do our jobs better. I think there are areas that we can explore within the offerings that we have that may bring kids in as well. So I certainly believe that there are opportunities, we just need to look carefully and identify them. And I also think our students are incredible resources that we can learn from by asking questions and asking for feedback and advice, and give them an opportunity to do some training of us.
And as you were talking, I was just thinking that so many of the years of cohorts for project-based learning actually mesh well with this. So maybe there's something to look at there and how that model works. Where, you know, because students and teachers are learning this whole new way of approaching problem-solving together.
I will say, having served on the Curriculum Council for a few years, just as a community member prior to being on the board, one of the things that I really enjoy about the work of that council is the participation of students on that board. And so it's always really interesting when students who are sitting around the table have taken these courses that are now up for review and revision, and they're able to provide real-life experience and commentary and reflection on those courses. And so I do think that, you know, trying to find other ways to engage the students in a feedback loop as it were, is helpful.
Okay, great. So I think for now, we're going to hold off on discussing anything in a Phase 2 or a Phase 3 until we can dig deeper into, I think, what we're now looking at as a Phase 1A.
A1.
A1, for better understanding the framework. Okay. So, next slide?
Oh, you're not going to have any questions?
Right, so the next slide is curriculum recommendations. And I think to Chris's point, I don't have, what he just said, in case it didn't get picked up on the mic, was, are we about to have the same discussion? I don't feel like we can do any kind of evaluation of curriculum at this point, given all the other information that we really need to kind of understand better first.
Sure. I think the, if you read what the recommendations came out of the task force, they're very focused on the framework, the state framework. What we just talked about was the importance of taking the state framework and layering it in and figuring out how it fits within our commitment and what we want to do in RYE. That work has to happen so we can have a model against which to audit the curriculum we are doing that. So I completely, and I think it's all, the ideals, what they want to do, what the idea of it is fantastic, but that comes after the fact, once we decide the benchmarks of the ideals that we want to audit it against.
Is my biggest fan.
So in that case, then, for the moment, I think we will have to revisit anything related to curriculum at a later date, once we have more, as we talked about this other set of information, and better understanding. So next, so the next slide is data and analysis, the vision, so maybe we should move past that to the recommendations. So, the efforts that were underway at the time were the Panorama survey that was implemented in May with the students, and then a subsequent one with teachers and staff, and then understanding, once we had that data, understanding what it was trying to tell us. So I think at this point, maybe, Dr. Brandt, if you want to give us a quick update on where some of that is?
So first, I'll say that we do have the summary data from the Panorama survey, which I shared with the Board of Education. And I would certainly say, in looking at it and talking with some of the folks from the data subgroup, it tells us some things, but it tells us some things about what's not there that we need to figure out a plan to gather. So when I, in talking with some of the folks from the data subgroup, really, their thinking is, what it tells us is that the next steps that they developed were definitely next steps that we need to pursue. One, we can certainly engage with an outside analyst to assist in looking at this data. We actually reached out, and on the slide it says the RYE Act resource. That came up in the discussions because we've done a fair amount of surveying through RYE Act. We've also done a fair, several rounds of surveying with Challenge Success. And RYE Act has been working with a researcher from Iona College, who has done a lot of the deep analysis of their data that's been collected through the RYE survey. So we had a meeting set up with the researcher from Iona to have a conversation about what could possibly be available for us. Unfortunately, due to a medical situation, had to be canceled, and we're working to reschedule that meeting, which will be sometime in September, to have that further conversation. Because honestly, the, you know, when you look at the data, there is some information that tells a bit of a story, but it tells more about how we have to go deeper into looking for specific information, and having an expert that works with data research and analysis, I think would be helpful with that. So, that's with regard to the student survey. The teacher survey, and I honestly believe it was due to the timing of when it was distributed and the craziness of the spring, did not get a sample size that was large enough to do any significant analysis of that. There was very few responses, and I think that's something we need to talk about in terms of figuring out ways to gather better information from staff, whether it was timing or not, or developing some additional surveys. But I do know that it was very much discussed in the data group, was identifying survey instruments and experts that could help us to a greater degree than Panorama was able to. Panorama had tools that were available to us that were already normed, already calibrated, but we never felt in the group that the tools gave us the information, the ability to gather the information that was necessary. So, I do think identifying ways to get that information and resources to use, whether it's by engaging with someone that is a professional survey designer, researcher, or finding a different organization that may have better tools. We were struggling to find quality surveys that were out there for the 612 student, for students with disabilities. There was just not much we were able to find, and I know that members of the subgroup were continuing to look over the summer and research. So that's sort of where we're at at this moment.
And when I just get back to the, actually, the recommendations from the task force, do you think you need a stronger mandate from us to go gather data and think about analysis?
I feel it's probably there. I definitely think the mandate's there.
Good. And then, we don't, we haven't talked a lot about the costs that come up from this stuff. Have you found that the financial resources have constrained you in anything you've wanted to do yet? You haven't come to us and said, "I'd love to do this, but it costs X dollars, we haven't had any of the discussions." It doesn't seem to have been an issue yet.
No, it hasn't been an issue yet, but part of, you know, I think one of the limitations of working with the Panorama survey was it was limiting because there are limitations when you have a contract for a product that exists. If we start to get to identifying someone that create and create valid and reliable instruments to gather information, it will be a cost that is quite different from what the Panorama cost was to, you know, use that, which we used for a variety of surveys across the year last year because they had other surveys available. But at the moment, I would say that has not been an issue, and we, I would certainly come back and say, this is going to be a costly venture, this is what it will cost, and this is what we need to do. And take direction from the board at that point in time. Sounds fair.
So I would say what I think it would be important to do as a first step, like you said, is to, I think you mentioned, is like going deeper into the data. So, and just looking at how the subgroups of demographic information came rolled out in the summary, there's some, and I know it's mentioned in here, there's some very small subsets of groups that it will be challenging to analyze how that data fits into the broader questions of whether it be belonging or the other categories that were part of the Panorama survey. So I think that, I think first it'd be really helpful, whatever we can, under... So I think that, I think first, it'd be really helpful, whatever we can understand about that, would be really helpful in inform us how much more we might want to go into creating a survey of our own to try to administer, because we don't, I mean, we do have to consider the cost piece of that, and understand more about what we're basing it on, that next step.
Yeah, it's that idea of, right, I don't know what I don't know. And it's, we've got to figure out, what is it that we don't have the information on that we think would be beneficial for us to get the information so we can help with the student experience for our kids?
And I would love, I think there could be tremendous value in looking at some previous sets of data, and where there might be crossover in that challenge success data, or even the RIAC pieces, in that sense of belonging and, you know, feeling included in the community space. Because that is already in existence, and it could be very informative for us, especially from a longitudinal standpoint.
I think we could definitely do that, and I think when we are finally able to have that meeting with the individual from Iona who's been doing that data crunching for RIAC, that will be particularly helpful. And I know that that will be coming up in the next couple of weeks. I know it is into September because of the individual's schedule, but that will be happening.
Great.
And I think the only other piece we haven't talked about, so we've talked about figuring out ways for this ongoing data gathering, potentially using surveys we've already done through other resources in the past and analyzing that. And then the third piece is thinking about more of a real-time data collection of need and ability as a district to, you know, kind of identify a way to kind of have more of a real-time, ongoing database for students to self-report in real-time.
I actually think there are some links to the first bullet in student support that we raised, because I do know that there are school systems that have reporting systems. A common one, and this is the commercial name, it's just a company that's out there, is called Anonymous Alerts, and it's a way for students to make reports of things that are concerning to them, and it gives schools information. I have not used the product myself. I can certainly research that and find out more about it, but it becomes a way, students have the ability to send information if there's a concern, if there's an incident, if there's something that's troubling them. But I think there's an absolute connection to what we talked about with the student support piece earlier, on the earlier slide, that we could bring to that team that's going to do that work, and ask them to look carefully at that and potentially incorporate this point into that research.
Thanks for picking that up, Kelsey, because I was, I'd gone out of order. Sorry. I should never go out of order. But you're right, Eric, I think that this feels like it fits very nicely into that student support section and what we talked about. So if we can maybe add that into that follow-up.
I guess similarly, it's, well, it creates systems to ensure all groups within the total school environment are heard, affinity groups, focus groups. So again, that kind of goes to that student support piece of how to include that, so just, yeah, kind of combining that.
Right. Yeah, and so I guess one of our other challenges, as we've found, is continuing to connect with alumni as well.
So we actually shifted some things at the end of the year, when we actually asked students to, who were graduating, we asked them for their information so that they could stay on our list, so that we could begin the process of building alumni email lists. So that's now something we've taken action to do. So it's the first step. There were some great ideas that came out. I know that, you know, Dan Brown from, who was on the data group, talked about ways that he, there are some Facebook pages and mechanisms for that alumni are connected, and so we can work with our Public Information Officer, Sarah Durman, to reach out through those groups to get alumni signed onto our mailing list so that we can begin to stay in touch with them and keep them apprised and reach out. You know, I know one of the things that Suzanne Short, our guidance department, is talking about is through our guidance department, staying in touch with our graduates to see how they're doing outside and beyond. There are systems that do alumni, five-year alumni surveys, and I'm sure Brian, you, and I know you don't have a microphone over there, but you may have done this in your previous role as a high school principal. It's something that some systems do, and I know it's something that we've talked about, is building a mechanism so that we have the ability to reach our alumni with a click of an email. And we've started that process.
Well, and it's funny, it's actually, I was having an entry interview earlier this week with Trish, and one of the things we talked about was almost like an exit interview type of opportunity for when kids are leaving the system, and then being able to connect again with them, I think is, I would love for that to be an outgrowth of this work, or just the work of the high school even, so that you can connect back with your students to understand, you know, what has their experience been. It helps inform us as a system, you know, where there might be opportunities for us to grow as well, in a lot of ways, outside of, you know, this particular context. Great? Okay. All right. So moving on to community engagement.
I'm all for it.
Community engagement?
Yep.
All right. Yeah. All right. So I think I am going to read this particular one, because I do think there's also some other pieces that we've already talked about that fall under community engagement, related to the framework specifically. But so, short-term strategic goal for this recommendation was to gather feedback from the RIAI community about their personal experiences of equity, inclusion, and exclusion within the RIAI City School District, to gather qualitative information that will inform next steps. The recommendation is to conduct community listening sessions in different segments of our communities, students and alumni, community members, faculty and staff, BIPOC, the BIPOC part of the community. So what I mentioned, that we sort of touched on community engagement, it's a little outside of this, but I think there's obviously a lot of opportunity to better understand the questions, concerns. You know, there's a lot of, there's been a lot outside of our community that has been talked about around the issue of inclusivity, equity, you know, from a national conversation down. And so I think there is a great deal of anxiety, and I think we heard a lot of fear in the spring about things that may be happening in other schools, maybe happening in other states. So I think having some of these conversations in real-time with people and listening to concerns so we can better understand where members of our community are coming from are going to be, could be, you know, a very beneficial part of this work. So perhaps if we can figure out how to do that.
I think there are a couple of ways to figure out how to do that. One, as we emerge from COVID, I don't want to sound flipped because we're concerned we're wearing masks again and dealing with some of the COVID pieces, but I certainly think there's been a, certainly around here in our community, there's been a lot of focus on vaccinations and prevention, and so I think events and things that had been on hold for quite some time are going to be happening again. So I think when I look at the short, I think there's some of the medium that could be very helpful in the short. I know that I've had quite a number of opportunities, and my 50 are here, to engage with many different members of the community, face-to-face, from the leaders of our religious institutions in the city of RIAI, who I've met with quite a number of times over the years. I'm already on the calendar to meet with them again in September. They haven't been meeting regularly, and I am thrilled to be going back to meet with them. You know, I've historically been a guest speaker, and just for touching base and talking at SPROY and at the Osborne and at the different faith-based institutions. I'll be speaking at RIAI Presbyterian in September at the Adult Education Program in the morning, nine o'clock on a Sunday morning, and it's a great opportunity to, for me to engage. But what I'm seeing is there are many different organizations, the faith-based community and the different youth-serving organizations in the community, that could be helpful in determining a way to get out there and gather community through listening sessions. So I do believe that it would not be a terribly difficult task to build that structure, to go out and do some community listening sessions with a basic question. To me, what this recommendation says is you pose a question, "What have your experiences been in inclusion and exclusion in our schools?" And then we shut up, and we listen, and everyone that's attending come and talk. And I definitely know, as being a part of the community engagement group, we talked about having sessions that were specific to groups, so having high school students, having middle school students, having parents, having community members, having alumni. I think those are pieces that can easily be put together, and I think there are so many incredible community organizations here in RIAI that would be absolute willing partners to help us do that.
Yeah, and I remember when we had these recommendations presented the first time, we talked about this sort of overarching group of growing the positive that includes, I think, almost all of the youth-serving organizations within the community, including the faith-based organizations. So that would be, I think, a wonderful way to start reaching out through those and other entities and connections to start that process and the conversation. Yeah. And then I think from the longer-term strategic goal, which says inform community about diversity, equity, and inclusion initiatives, and provide opportunities for feedback, that obviously, I think, might be an output of some of these conversations and listening sessions, that, you know, where we have a better understanding after hearing from our community members. And I particularly liked how you talked about, you know, having the group of high school students and the age of parents, because I think there's some, it's important for those groups to have that commonality among them in order to feel like they can open up and talk in that setting.
Thank you. So just in thinking about that long-term strategic goal, we actually have a model for this, in that we've done lots of presentations in sharing our work and professional learning and curriculum over the years to share what are we doing, what are we focusing on, what are the outcomes, how is it helping our kids? And, you know, I think we're pretty good about doing those kind of presentations, but I do believe that having those regular opportunities for feedback and being transparent, sharing, "This is what's happening, and this is what we're seeing."
Any other, again, I think we're sort of at this, you know, let's start the conversation with the community groups and, you know, see where we could go with getting some of these listening sessions set up. Great. Okay. And then the last slide is the update on the equity audit.
So I prepared this slide with Caitlin Cesson, our Director of Technology, just to give you a bit of a status update. So we have begun working with what we call the Lyric, and I know I always like to spell out in all of my reports to the board, I always spell out our acronyms.
I have acronyms.
The Lower Hudson Regional Information Center. So there are a number of RICS throughout the state. For some reason, the number 11 or something is coming to me, I don't know the answer to that question, that could be, but the RIC is a regional center that is, it provides the data warehousing services for school districts in this region. So when we have to report things to the state, it goes through the RIC. It comes from us to the RIC, or things come from the state through the RIC to us. So they are the data experts with all of the different kinds of data that are available. So we're working with the RIC. One slight challenge in working with the RIC, which is our data warehouse, is that they are not yet fully backed in person in their offices, so it has made, it has made the work a little slower than we would like, but they will be soon. And so what we're able to pull through the RIC, through the data warehouse, is overall summary data as well as disaggregating data by subgroup. So the federally protected classes, any of the demographic information that is within the reports, within the data, we're able to pull it that way. Because the testing data and everything, we have very specific requirements for reporting. So when you look at the New York State Department of Education's data dashboard site, it's a public site, you can see subgroup performance across different areas. So they're enabling, they're helping us to pull that data in those ways so that we can look at those ourselves. So our tech staff, led by Dr. Cesson, and the Lyric staff are pulling this data and organizing it, and we're expecting a mid-October completion, when the findings can be brought back to the Board of Education. So just to give you an idea of what we're looking at here, we have data from 1718 through 2021, and what you'll see, you may think it's an error down on the bottom, it shows three chunks, 1718, 1819, and then goes right to 2021, because most of the state assessments were canceled in the 1920 school year. But we do have some, like AP data, course enrollment data, internal data that we have, we just don't have the, like, the ELA and math assessments were canceled last year. So we are able to pull the ELA and math assessment data, that's grades three through eight. We are able, and are pulling Regents' data across the different Regents' exams, grades nine through 12. AP assessment information, the suspension information, which we have to report, so the discipline information to the state, and the ESSA report. So ESSA is the Every Student Succeeds Act, which was the renamed Elementary and Secondary Education Act, and that is the federal, so everything to this point. So you have state is the New York State ELA and Math, state is the Regents' exam, AP is their own, it's a private organization, the suspension data is our local suspension data, and then the ESSA reporting, which has a lot of disaggregation to it that we are required to submit. And then the ESSA reporting, which has a lot of disaggregation to it that we are required to submit. And they pull, so we're pulling the ESSA data that has been disaggregated at that level to take a closer look at that. So all of those pieces are being pulled so that we can do the analysis and tell you what story, if any, is this data telling us. And we're doing it just by looking at the pure data. There's no need for any tools or anything right now. We're able to disaggregate the data, we're able to compare it to summary data, and then we'll bring it back to you with the findings in mid-October.
So I guess the only other downside to the 2021 state test data is because it was also, while they were canceled, it was not really a full representation of what you would have seen in 1718 and 1819. But the other pieces, as we talk about up here, will be in place, we'll be able to look at those.
There's a lot, there's a lot of data to pull, so I think- Certainly, when we do data analysis, we're looking for trends, patterns, things like that. That's a big piece of the lens that we're using. As we're looking at the disaggregation and the subgroups, what are we seeing across data sets and what are we seeing across years of the data? Obviously, if we need to go further back because we don't have enough, we're going to do that. And we'll explain that when we come back.
Okay. That sounds great. And so then I guess the other quick follow-up, not Equity Audit-related, but Panorama data-related. So hopefully, maybe that the timing will coincide or be before this, when we expect this data to be available, where we could talk about what we, you know, if any trends were seen in that Panorama data outside of the summary document that we have. But you'll know better, I guess, once you've had a chance to talk to the analysts in September. Okay.
So as, before we, okay, before we move past, I just want to go back for a second because I don't think we were explicit, and I want to make sure for everybody who is not sitting in the room, when we talk about curriculum, one of the first bullets in Phase One is select curriculum audit tools. So I just want to be explicit, that is not, we are not doing an audit at this time of our curriculum. So when we're talking about this audit, as we were, that is just strictly student data audit. A curriculum audit is not being done at this time. There is no recommendation to do that at this time. We're going to explore the framework, and then we'll see where we need to go.
That's correct.
Thank you for that, Eric.
Yes. All right. So that takes us through all of the recommendations. So at this point, there's internal next steps that will occur with administration, whether it be central administration or building administration, to pull some additional information based on the discussion tonight. And then will there be an opportunity, maybe in the first board meeting of the year, for you to kind of give us an idea of when we might see some reporting out on that throughout the first half of the year? So the community has an X, understands when we might be looking at some of the more of this?
We can certainly, tomorrow, Trish, Brian, and I are sitting down and comparing our notes to make sure, I've been repeating myself a lot, to make sure that I've got down our charge and our direction from the board. I've asked them to do the same, and we'll develop some timelines. And I'll give you a report at the first meeting of where we are and where we're going and when you're going to hear back from us.
Is everyone good with that as the next steps plan?
Sounds great.
Okay. Wonderful. All right. So I don't think we have anything, oh, Tom, did you have something?
No, I said yes.
Oh, okay. So I want to thank all of the administrators for being here to listen to the discussion. Because I know, aside from Dr. Burden, we didn't really ask you many questions. But I think it's an important piece for you to understand, you know, kind of where we, where we're trying to have a fuller understanding for ourselves of how we're going to proceed in looking at this within the RIAC, the RIAC community. I think it's really important that we focus here and, you know, maintain that focus as we move forward. So I think I will just ask for a motion to adjourn. Chris Repetto, second by, Jane Anderson, all those in favor? Five, that's five, that's right, five, nothing. Thank you very much. And our next board meeting will be, oh, September, September 14th? September 14th will be our next regular board meeting after the start of school.
Maybe asking the board just to do a consent agenda for final appointments on the opening day of Stanford.
Okay, okay. All right, wonderful. Thank you. Enjoy the rest of your summer.